I'd like to call this January 3rd session of the Hoyoke City Council to order the clerk to call the roll and record those members present.
Burtley, Brezneren, Graney, Jordane, Leahy, LeBron Martinez, Leece, Lopez, McGee, McGivern, Roman, Sullivan, Tolman, Bacon, Valentine.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. And the city of Hoyoke. Councillors, before we begin, I would like to first recognize some moments of silence. First of which, I would like to recognize that we lost one of our public safety officials over the past week. Sergeant Dave O'Connell passed away this past week. He worked for the city for thirty years as a law enforcement officer, rising to the rank of sergeant, and I'd like to have a moment of silence in Sergeant O'Connell's honor. I would next like, on behalf of the body, to have a moment of silence and recognition of the three lost lives recently, and for those that were injured in this recent fire on Northeast Street, a real tragedy. And obviously, we're very thankful to our public safety officials who continue to keep us safe every day, who go into harms way each and every day in order to save life and property. We're thankful that more lives were not lost in this tragedy, but we want to take time to remember those that were lost. And I would ask for a moment of silence at this time, on behalf of these three lost souls. Thank you very much. In a special recognition, I'd like to recognize the mayor. I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules. The mayor has a few thoughts he would like to share with us on the recent events that took place at Northeast Street, and he has some information for the public as well as for us. And I want to first say, I want to thank Alex for his leadership. I want to thank him for his hard work on this and keeping us very informed about what's going on, and certainly him and a number of the councillors that have gone down to help with the victims and the city's quick response over at Kelly School. So, is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Alex, microphones yours, please.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you to the council for allowing me just to be here for a few minutes to give a few updates on the situation that was developing over the weekend. As many of you know, I wrote you an email last night with some updates from throughout the last forty-eight hours or so. Obviously, it's no secret that it's been a pretty sad and heartbreaking few days for the city of Hoyoke, starting with the death of Sergeant Dave O'Connell and the fire over the weekend, and then the news of another Hoyoker, Heather McMahon, passing away yesterday. And so, you know, despite the grief that many of us are feeling in this community, I think what has been heartening is the hope that all of us see and the hundreds of people coming together over the weekend, going through the doors of Kelly School to provide donations for those families in need. As I said last night, and the public knows, we did have twenty-five displaced families from both 106 Northeast Street, as well as the house that had to be evacuated and it was damaged next door. As of this afternoon, twenty-four of those twenty-five families have now found permanent long-term housing elsewhere. All of the families today were at what we called, in collaboration with MIMA and the Red Cross, the Disaster Recovery Center. That was open all day today at the Warm Room Oil. We opened it up at ten AM. It closed at about five PM this afternoon. That'll be open again tomorrow from ten AM until two PM. And what that basically is, is it's everything from housing to the Department of Transitional Assistance, the Division of Insurance, to make sure residents and tenants have a way to access insurance. I know a few councillors were there, and I appreciate you being there and showing your presence and support to the community as well. We were helping folks get their birth certificates. I want to thank the Clerk's Office for helping with that. Also, our State Representative's Office for expediting photo IDs and licenses from the Department of Transportation. This really has been an all-hands-on-deck approach to this. Over the weekend, I also want to thank Jackie Gleschin. She's the principal of Kelly School. She saw her families outside of the apartment building on Northeast Street, and took the initiative on her own before the Warm Room Oil was open to open the doors of Kelly School. It made the most sense because it was right down the street. And literally, within a couple of hours of that school opening, the place was packed with hundreds of volunteers bringing clothing and toiletries and food and everything you can imagine for these families. In terms of the apartments that a lot of the displaced tenants have moved into, I know a couple of communications were sent to councillors about the conditions of those apartments. I just want to reassure the council that all of those apartments have certificates of occupancy. We were, however, aware that some of those apartments didn't have stoves or refrigerators, but we did work with gas and electric yesterday, and the contractors hired by Nivea Investments to make sure there was heat and hot water running. Dave Conti was also available, as was Jim Lovell, yesterday. And so, I want to thank both of them and their departments for being on call. The apartments that were available, luckily fifteen of them through the same owner, were backup apartments, not sort of ready right away, but they worked very quickly to get them there. And obviously, we made the decision that it was better sleeping in an apartment with heat and hot water than on a cot at the Warm Room Oil, and also giving people a home again. Folks are also moving into unfurnished apartments, and so we've seen an influx of donations around furniture. Furniture will still be donated. What we're trying to do over the next couple of days is get a more specific list of the family's needs, whether it's sofas or, you know, couches, beds, mattresses, and things of the sort. But the business community has also been incredibly generous. Home with Suites is donating a bunch of furniture. You know, People's Bank has donated twenty-five hundred dollars, and just all of the restaurants that have donated food for everyone involved. And so, that's been incredibly heartening, as I said before, to see so many Hoyokers come out and support other folks in need. Again, I wanted to remind people that tomorrow, ten to two, that center will continue to be open for those families. One of the most important ways for people to help right now, other than the in-kind contributions, is by donating to the Emergency Relief Fund. We have a goal of raising one hundred thousand dollars, and all of that will go directly to those folks affected by the fire. As of right now, we've raised about forty-six thousand dollars, which is almost fifty percent of that goal, which I think this shows again the generosity of the people of Hoyoke and beyond. And I would also be remiss, of course, not to thank our public safety officers, our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders for their brave response to the fire on New Year's Day. I also want to thank the fire chief, the police chief, the auxiliary police, our first responders. I know, as I said last night, one of the, you know, major issues, obviously, with this fire in particular was, number one, no one called 911 until several minutes after, and it was actually a neighbor of the building that ended up calling 911. This building in particular didn't have a sprinkler system, which obviously didn't help control the fire in that building, nor did it have what's called a monitored system that connects directly to the fire department. And so, in the coming days, I'll be working with the fire chief and the fire department, the building department, to see what communities can do to work with building owners, particularly of this size, to see what we can do to require monitored systems to make sure there is that connection between the fire department and those apartment buildings. Currently, by law, it's not required, but it is about a ten thousand dollar expense which seems reasonable for buildings of this size. And so, those are the type of things that we want to address in the coming days to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Again, I want to thank our firefighters. Once they did get the call, they were there within about a minute. And I know you might be hearing a little bit about engine tube brownouts this evening, but right now, our focus, of course, is making sure everyone affected by the fire tonight has a place to sleep in, and making sure, again, the community comes together, and we work hand-in-hand in the coming days to prevent this from happening again. So, thank you, all of you, for your attention and your support. And again, I know Hoyoke comes together in times of need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that. Yes, Counsel Valentine?
Just to add to the update from the mayor, that one of the things that came out this weekend at Kelly School is that the donations that are there right now in the gym will be available for folks to access from one to four PM until Friday, and for folks to obviously keep in mind that school is in session. And they are requesting that volunteers come to help with the organization of that, but not too many because school is in session. And then, the plan is, when we spoke to Jackie Gleschin, who was great over the weekend, the plan is that once Thursday or Friday comes around and the families have taken care of the needs, then the idea is to open it up to other families in the flats and families that go to Kelly, to be able to access the tons of toiletries, clothing, food that is there before it gets shipped to Salvation Army in Hadley, which is the big distribution center. So, we'll be updating with that on social media as well. But just, again, a huge thanks to Jackie and her team for literally becoming, you know, the center out of nowhere and really coming together in that way. So, just wanted to add that for folks to know.
Good. Thank you for that. Counselor Presley?
If any councillors get a text or a message from their friends that the TVs aren't working, they're currently working on the problem, but we are currently not being televised.
That's too bad. All right. Very good. We had four items currently laid on the table. These were the minutes of, as articulated there on the agenda. Is there an appetite? I believe Counselor Lopez, if I best recall, you were waiting for the legal opinion from the Law Department, and it says they were in compliance. They have since given us that legal opinion that they are. Would you like to act on those?
Yeah, please.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. You want to make a motion to remove from the table items one through four?
Motion to...
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to remove from the table items one through four. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion, let me just quickly read through these. This is the Hoyoke Board of Health minutes for September eighth and October third, the Board of Public Works minutes of October seventeenth, the Sewer Commission minutes of October seventeenth, and the Stormwater Authority minutes of October seventeenth. Motion on the floor is to receive and approve all of these minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We now have public comment. We had two citizens sign up for public comment for this particular meeting. First up is Chad Cunningham. He is the head of the Firefighters Union. He resides at 57 Parsons Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. Is there a suspension of the rules to allow a non-resident of the city of Hoyoke to speak?
I'm making a motion to allow him to speak.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Mr. Cunningham, welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you, our council, for giving this opportunity to speak to you. I'd stand before you. First, I would like to thank all the councillors that showed up and gave us support down there on Sunday. I was one of the first people to arrive on scene, and it was the worst thing I've ever come into in my ten years on the fire department. And second, our hearts go out to all the victims and the families affected by this. It was tragic, and this is not a political statement. That's not why I'm up here. I want to get some facts out that I think are important for the council to know. Those are, there's been a lot of talk about response time. We had a very, very excellent response time, but our response time was far over a minute. You can look at our fire dispatch logs, and the call came in at eight fifty-three and zero seconds in the morning, and according to our dispatch logs, the first arriving engine arrived on scene at eight fifty-six and thirty-eight seconds. That appears to be three minutes and thirty-eight seconds to me. They arrived on scene with only six members, when they should have arrived on scene with nine, having engine two in service. There was water supply issues because engine two was not in service. There was manpower issues because engine two was not in service. If engine two was in service, there would have been three members there that could have thrown a ladder to help that victim that jumped out of the window because she couldn't stay where she was any longer. I find that Chief Pond not standing behind his fire department in this and saying that we had plenty of people on scene, I find it disgusting, to be honest with you. And I'm not sure if that chief should be the chief of this department if he's not going to back his members when we go into a scene like that. But mostly, what I would like is for the city council to come together and find a way and to get engine two, to help us get engine two open, so we don't have to have this happen again. As I said today earlier, when the mayor made his comments about making this a political thing, it's not a political thing. It is absolutely about lives. The mayor's right, and like I said today, it's about saving lives, so we don't have to remember the lives later. So, please, please work as much as you can to get that engine open for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate that. Next up is Michael Siciliano of 283 Linden Street.
Thank you, Kevin, for this privilege. I'm here tonight to support the Firefighters Union of the city of Hoyoke, specifically in regards to the second engine that's supposed to help fight fires in downtown Hoyoke. I, as many folks in Hoyoke, I'm definitely sad by the tragedy that happened recently. And indeed, it's tragedy like this that brings out the true colors of this city. I am blessed to call this city my home. For those of you who don't know, I've been here over fifteen years now. Hoyoke indeed is my home, the most family-friendly city I've ever known. And that family reflection, it comes out in the generosity of all the city residents who have come together to support recent victims in downtown. I want to point out that, and give credit, I believe it was Dr. Stevens Reich who put a call out to his students and families, and there is a, he has initiated a food campaign drive within the public schools for Wednesday and Thursday. So, the public schools indeed are raising or using their effort, the resources they have, to help the families, the victims of this past weekend. I, indeed, it's true about the generosity here in the city of Hoyoke. Unfortunately, our, this really beautiful city that deserves the best, only the best, unfortunately, it appears that there isn't a lot of, or the common sense isn't very predominant. Because in support of the firefighters we're here tonight, I want to offer, and it's not appropriate that the mayor apparently isn't here any longer because these suggestions are directly for him in regards to how to fund the fire engine that's been quote-unquote "browned out," I judge that this is a short-sighted policy and that the priorities, the current priorities of the city of Hoyoke are, I've been looking for the adjective all day long to describe this, but I'm going to say conspicuously bad. The mayor needs to stand up and acknowledge his short-sightedness. I suggest, and if he was here, I would talk to him directly, that he limit his administration. That I'm judging that his office is top-heavy. I'm judging that the planning department is top-heavy, and I'm judging that the administration in the fire department is also top-heavy. And here is a simple equation, you know, who am I? I'm just a guy. But I hammer nails for a living. At least, I've swung a hammer a few times, and that provides a little bit of common sense. So, I thought I'd come down here and share that with you all tonight. I think that specifically the mayor needs to take a hard look at this current policy to defund one of the two engines at the headquarters of our fire department. He needs to take a serious look at the budget, because I'm a novice here, but I think it's out of the hands of the city council to, in essence, take this power. However, once again, I'm going to restate my proposal. The mayor eliminate at least one of his staff, if not two. He also eliminate up to half of the planning department, and there's at least one political position that should be eliminated. Apparently, the city has a director of conservation, which should be eliminated and are replaced by a much more authentic director of, for instance, energy auditing, someone who might actually save the city some BTUs.
Michael, you just got to wrap up, though.
Okay. Well, Kevin, thank you. That was my point.
Okay.
And, you know, certainly you folks know, and again, touch me, I'm at 283 Linden Street in Hoyoke. Kevin, thank you.
Always. Yep. Good to hear from you. Good to see you. All right. Thank you. So, that excludes our list of concerned citizens that wanted to speak. I believe one or two councillors had a rule suspension.
I have a rule suspension, take a late file order.
Proceeding with. Counselor Graney, did you have, did Counselor Graney have a late file? He asked.
Second.
Counselor Graney has filed a late file order marked "late file B." States order that the fire department and building and codes immediately investigate the condition of the housing that the victims of the fire on Northeast Street are placed in. He'd like a consideration of the body to take action on this at this time. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Take up this item now and allow final action on this item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counselor Graney, would it be safe to say you're looking to have this approved and to be sent to the fire department and building and codes?
Absolutely. It comes from constituents, and the mayor addressed some of the issues about the stoves and some of the refrigerators that weren't working in some of these apartments. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was corrected as soon as possible to make the victims of this fire as comfortable as we possibly can under very difficult circumstances.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Counselor Leece?
Thank you. Based on some of the emails that I've seen, I think that there are board of health violations that need to be reconciled, or at least inspected, to make sure that they have been reconciled. So, I would just add a friendly amendment, if I may, to...
Add board of health?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion is to amend the order to add the board of health. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Let me just get that down. Counselor Roman, was your hand up? Did you want to be recognized? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So moved. Counselor Presley?
Yeah, I did the motion to suspend the rules to take up my late file. I don't know what number it was, or letter.
Second.
I'd also request to suspend the rules and allow me to speak just a minute upon it, just to explain it.
Sure. Yep. Motion has been made that we suspend the rules, take up for final action at this time on order introduced by Counselor Presley. And I believe you want to send it to committee ultimately, but we do want to speak on it.
Correct.
Is ordered that the mayor adequately fund the fire department to keep all apparatus in service and in operation. This includes the five-engine companies and two-ladder companies, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Motion is to suspend the rules to allow this item to come up now and to take final action, which I believe ultimately is going to be go to committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I could just ask the author if I, Danny, if I could put my name on it as well.
Of course. Anybody wants to.
What late file is this?
D.
Thank you.
Late file D.
Thank you, Danny.
Adding Counselor Leahy as a cosponsor, adding Counselor Lopez as a cosponsor. Counselor Graney in addition. Adding Counselor Graney as a cosponsor. Counselor McGee as a cosponsor. Counselor Presley?
Very briefly, and I just want to remind everybody, the TVs are off, so this is just a conversation for everyone in this room. You know, I mean, I spoke to some of these firefighters, you know, two guys went into this building that was being destroyed, ravaged by fire. And if you watch the video, you can see the white smoke, that's the water hitting the fire. Two guys went into this building, ran out of water. Typically, two go in, two follow them in. Well, the two that didn't follow them in would be belonging to engine two. I mean, there's a lot of ways to look at this. They could rotate engines. I'm not in favor of any brownouts, but there's different ways to look at it. My questions are, who decided on engine two down here on High Street, one of the thickly, most densely neighborhood areas? We took an engine offline. It doesn't make sense, and it's unfortunate this tragedy had to take place for us to kind of, you know, really put the pieces together to find out five engines, two-ladder companies, and start using the correct lingo. But I just think it's imperative that the mayor figure out how to get money to the fire department to do this. And I just think it's not, unfortunately, we lost three lives. It's a terrible tragedy. It's a miracle that two firefighters came out of that building alive themselves. And to the union president, it would be, if you were on a high-speed motorcycle, you couldn't get to that fire from High Street. I mean, maybe a truck was there, or, you know, the deputy was driving around, might have been on scene, and they're calling it. It took a minute to get on scene. Unfortunately, it didn't take that long. It took longer than a minute. So, we just got to have a discussion. It's going to public safety. I'm going to, you know, personally invite everyone that's involved, the mayor, the board of commissioners, the union, if they choose, and just hash this out. I mean, we can't have, I mean, no one can say this is exactly why this happened, because engine two wasn't there, but the fact of the matter is, is that two guys went into a burning, crumbling building. Four were supposed to go in. They ran out of water. They had to come out because the engines were blowing alarms, and you can see it all on video. You watch it, it was explained to me as I'm watching it. It's unbelievable that these guys came out of that building alive, and it's unfortunate that people had to die. So, let's get them the money that they need. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, very quickly. That morning, I really don't want to go into much details because I'll probably start bawling, but I found out about the fire, ran over to Stop &amp; Shop to grab cases of water for these firefighters. One of the first people I see is the man sitting over there, Chad. These guys, the look in their eyes, the stuff that me, just standing there for three hours, I saw stuff that I would never repeat to anyone. I saw some bad stuff. This is probably one of the most horrific things that I've ever experienced in my life. And could, if we had engine two, if it was there, could it have been better? Well, you know what? Goddamn, it could be any worse. You know, we have to get all the apparatuses going. I mean, we have a fire department that doesn't have what they need, in my opinion, and I'm certainly not an expert. But in my opinion, I think if we could have it, we should have it. And I go along with the police department as well, with the cars. People are arguing three cars here, four cars. Let's get these public servants, public safety people, what they need. Lives matter. These, I'm not going to go that way because it's, I'm not going to be political about. But what we need to do is we all get on the same page. I applaud Danny for filing this order. I'm glad to be a co-signer, and let's get a good, healthy discussion going, because we need to get, we need to get some things fixed. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay. One question I would have, maybe, and I'll ask the chairman of this, if we could work with the union or the other leadership of the fire department to get some sort of, you gave a lot of really good statistical, Chad, tonight about, you know, this was the time that the call came in, this is the time our first truck. If we could get some sort of, like, incident report as to, or sort of an after-action report on everything that occurred, you know, these different incidents or piece of it, that would be really helpful informationally to us, too. If that type of thing is available.
If it's on public records, you should be able to access it or request it.
Okay. But there is such a thing?
We already...
And it's already been made?
I'm not sure if the fire report is finished yet.
Okay.
Because it's still an ongoing investigation.
Okay. Okay.
That would be considered...
But at some point, that will be available, and we can get that for the committee. That would be good for the membership to have and learn more about a lot of the logistics in these. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And through...
Thank you, Mr. President. And through you to the fire department guys. Um, I'm understanding that that apartment was supposed to have a monitored alarm system and that the alarm system had been placed into the apartment. So I'm just wondering if part of the investigation will include whether an alarm company did call the fire department ever? Because the mayor said that no alarm company called. And my understanding is if there's that many apartments, it is a law that they have to have a monitored alarm. Not necessarily directly connected to the fire department, but to an alarm company. So will that be just through the president?
Well, somebody could look into that and report back to the council on that. And, um, maybe we can get together offline and, and discuss a few different things. That would be helpful in a report. I'm certainly available to, to you. Um, and we can try and make this meeting when we have it, which I would assume councillor Brezner will schedule at the year's earliest.
January 26th is what I'm aiming for.
Okay, conven- convenient time. All right.
Thank you.
To, to, to review all of that. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So the motion before us is to, um, councillor Brezner and other co-sponsors order to send it to the public safety committee. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. Communications. Communications, uh, up is the appointments of city officers. I'm going to, uh, give a couple of different things on this, if we may. First thing I need to tell you is that for the position of water commissioner, we're not yet able to really take a vote on that because that posting has not, only was completed last week. So, um, as you may recall, um, we haven't had to fill a water commissioner position in a long, long time. And so when the powers that be had to actually get a job description to do a posting on it, um, there wasn't one. There wasn't one. So Dave Conti, um, and of course, it's the holiday season and such as it is, um, he did his very best. Uh, and he gave a draft last Wednesday or Thursday of last week to personnel. Yep. Um, correct. Yep. Oh, this just came out January, I see his date is January 3rd.
Today.
Today. Okay. So it proves my point. Okay. So, um, thank you for that. So this posting, that's right here, welcome to show anybody. This was just finalized last on Thursday. So, um, Bob asked me that day, Thursday, to get, to review it, greenlight it. I made really very small alterations to it, mostly grammatical of nature, um, because Dave, Dave Conti, you know, captured it pretty well. Um, so anyways, this was done last Thursday. Okay? So we don't really have, there is one candidate who had already, like a month ago, put in a, an application. So certainly he'll be considered. But there's certainly, to put it out there to one into the world, this actually went up this morning. So, um, to be fair to anybody that wanted to become a water commissioner, I think we should, maybe for our next meeting, or if we feel that that's been sufficient amount of time. I believe we're looking to give ideally people, this is, this is January 9th, that, that's only six days, but, um, certainly a reasonable period of time. So I just wanted to put that out there for water commissioner. The rest of them, certainly ready to go for tonight for your consideration. I would just make a friendly reminder that when we vote on these, we vote alphabetically, okay, under the rule.
President, make a motion to go to the first ballot for administrative assistant to the city council.
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to go to the first ballot for administrative assistant to the city council. Recognizing councillor Bacon. Had her hand up.
I just wanted to note that on our desk, there is another applicant that has put his name forth. I don't know if our administrative assistant.
For which position?
Water commissioner.
Water commissioner. Okay, good. So we're getting, we're getting names.
But can I ask you a question under?
Yes, councillor Leahy.
This could be a rumor. You know Hoyok is. I was heard, I was told that Bob Judge is leaving. Is any truth to that?
Yes.
Yes.
I received an email, uh, that indicated that, yes.
All right. So will he be here for the, um?
I have, I was not told when Bob's, when Bob's leaving, when is last days. I have no, no information other than I understand Bob is, is leaving.
Okay. Um, because I just want to make sure that whoever applies, um, or wants to put their name in, make sure they kind of gel with that qualif- I haven't seen this. I'm assuming it's mailed to us?
Which is that?
Water commission description?
This?
Yeah.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm under, I, I understand. I'm, did you get this off the website?
I did.
That was the indication. Is this supposed to be on our website? So you could certainly go there to get a copy. You can have this copy if you want.
No, I have it online. It looks pretty wrinkled. I don't want.
Okay, yeah.
What's happening with that? Thank you.
Uh, councillor Bartley?
Yeah, Bob's, uh, the position is on, for HR director is, is posted online.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Uh, anyone else? Okay. Uh, any discussion about administrative assistant to the city council? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll. When your name is called, you will state the name of your candidate. Uh, the current incumbent is Ryan Allen of 84 Meadowbrook Road, seated here to my right. This is seeking a, uh, one-year, uh, term renewal. Term will expire January 2018.
Bartley?
Ryan A- Ryan Allen.
Brezner? Graney?
Ryan Allen.
Jordane?
Ryan Allen.
Leahy?
Mr. Ryan Allen.
Lebron Martinez?
Ryan Allen.
Lisi?
Ryan Allen.
Lopez?
Ryan Allen.
McGee?
Ryan Allen.
McGivern?
Ryan Allen.
Roman?
Ryan Allen.
Sullivan?
Ryan Allen.
Tomlin?
Ryan Allen.
Bacon?
Ryan Allen.
Valentine?
Ryan Allen.
Ryan Allen, 14 votes.
By your vote, you've unanimously reappointed Ryan Allen to the position of administrative assistant. Will you accept?
President, make a motion to move to the first ballot for, for the assessor's position.
Yeah, second. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to go to the first ballot for the position of assessor. This is a three-year appointment. The current incumbent for the position is Anthony Delude of 143 Westfield Road for a term expiring February of 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll. When your name is called, please state the name of your candidate for this position.
Bartley?
Tony Delude.
Brezner? Graney?
Anthony Delude.
Jordane?
Anthony Delude.
Leahy?
Mr. Anthony Delude.
Lebron Martinez?
Anthony Delude.
Lisi?
Tony Delude.
Lopez?
Tony Delude.
McGee?
Anthony Delude.
McGivern?
Tony Delude.
Roman?
Anthony Delude.
Sullivan?
Anthony Delude.
Tomlin?
Anthony Delude.
Bacon?
Anthony Delude.
Valentine?
Anthony Delude.
Tony Delude, 14 votes.
By your vote, you have reappointed Anthony Delude to another three-year term as one of our assessors. Next up is water commissioner. I'd ask that we take a motion to table that.
Motion to table.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, motion for first ballot from someone?
First ballot for the Whiting Street Fund.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go to the first ballot on the Whiting Street Fund. Yes, councillor Leahy?
Just, uh, very quickly, for, uh, for the purpose of the new, newer city councillors, can you just give a description exactly what this is?
Sure. One thing I'll say too, that recently, if you want to go and you want to be an energetic and ambitious and research of, uh, city councillor, we actually have an ordinance on this that does articulate now some of the duties of the Whiting Street Fund. Um, we actually created that not too long ago. Um, however, I will tell you that, um, Whiting Street, um, is a gentleman who left an endowment to the city of Hoyok to make, um, charitable contributions to people meeting certain criteria. Um, there is a board that administers this. This money was given to the city, I'm going to say, at least 75 or 80 years ago. And this endowment, uh, helps people who are sort of down on their luck. And you can make applications to this fund. This board of commissioners determine who's of need and should be awarded some charitable assistance. And so, um, Mr. Lavelle here, who's one of the current, I believe it's four or five commissioners, something like this, that serve on this, uh, serve on this board. So, um, current incumb- this is a three-year term for a term expiring January 2020. Patrick Lavelle of 4 Montgomery Avenue is the current incumbent. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, the clerk will kindly call the roll. When your name is called, please state the name of your candidate for the Whiting Street Fund. Thank you.
Can I?
Oh, yes.
Do we have it like, like an amount of what it is? So that's some, it's available for us to look it up? I never realized that I could look it up.
Oh, yeah. They give different varying amounts, um, from that.
So it's not, it's not an account that is growing interest at all, or?
Yeah, they have. Obviously, I'm, I, my understanding is it was endowed umpteen years ago with a decent amount of money. And they, um, I couldn't tell you exactly how much they distribute, but I haven't looked it up in a while. But I'm going to venture a guess to say something in the range of $5,000 to $10,000 a year is made in contributions to various people. Yep. Okay. Uh, councillor McGivern, do you?
No, I was just going to add, the treasurer controls the fund itself. I believe it's also a voting member.
Right.
And one of the criterias that, that just makes it kind of odd, but it was Mr. Whiting Street's preference was if someone is receiving, already receiving assistance from part of some government, part of one of our governments, then they can, they are, they are not eligible for this fund. It's for those who have nowhere else to turn to.
Yeah, sort of your, between the cracks, you know, you can't get help elsewhere. Okay. Clerk will kindly call the roll. Uh, when your name's called, please state the name of your candidate.
Bartley?
Pat Lavelle Jr.
Brezner? Graney?
Patrick Lavelle.
Jordane?
Patrick Lavelle.
Leahy?
Mr. Patrick Lavelle.
Lebron Martinez?
Mr. Patrick Lavelle.
Lisi?
Patrick Lavelle.
Lopez?
Mr. Lavelle.
McGee?
Patrick Lavelle.
McGivern?
Patrick Lavelle.
Roman?
Patrick Lavelle.
Sullivan?
Patrick Lavelle.
Tomlin?
Patrick Lavelle.
Bacon?
Mr. Lavelle.
Valentine?
Patrick Lavelle.
Patrick Lavelle, 14 votes.
By your vote, you have reappointed Mr. Lavelle to another three-year term. Item number six. We have a communication from Sarah Carroll. She's the assistant city solicitor, as we know, and she has provided us with a letter of view of our meeting minutes regarding compliance with the open meeting law for various minutes that were articulated to us earlier, uh, that we just approved. Motion to receive would be in order.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven is a communication from Brenna Murphy-McGee, who, as you know, is our city clerk, and Ryan Allen, our recently reappointed administrative assistant. This is the minutes of December 20th, 2016. Um, it should be noted that, um, unfortunately, the, this package did not make it into your meeting minute packages. Therefore, you really have not had at this time ample opportunity to review this. I would recommend that we table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Table till next time. President's report. I first would like to say that, uh, unless there's objection, it was going to be my intent to, uh, on your behalf and after consulting with you, to make a donation of $150 to the, uh, fire victims fund on behalf of the Hoyok City Council Flower Fund. If that's, uh, if that's, uh, meets with your approval, uh, I wanted to, uh, to run that by you. So I want to thank the membership, um, for your once, for your generosity on behalf of them. And I will certainly get that out, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I had discussed to the, with the mayor earlier where we could send that to.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is, is there a way to make that amount, uh, higher? Or, I mean, I, I know you, you have the numbers of where we're at with the flower fund, but?
Yeah. Um, I suppose theoretically, um, I suppose within reason larger.
I mean, maybe 250 instead of 150. I mean, it's, obviously, whatever's collected from this, which is being managed by the treasurer's office, will be split evenly between, uh, the families. And I confirm with the mayor that it's going to be not only for the folks that, uh, were displaced and affected, but also for family members of, uh, the fatalities. So it's a bigger number if you look at the people this is going to be distributed amongst. Um, so I, I, I would just propose 250, but I'm open to suggestions on that.
Okay. Um, well, uh, councillor Sullivan?
I'll sweeten the pie if the, uh, body seems, uh, willing to go along with councillor Valentine's 250. Uh, Max Salvage and maintenance will match it with another 250.
Well, that's certainly, that's certainly a nice incentive. Yeah. So I'd be very open to that.
All right. I'll second that.
So moved.
As a, as a guardian of all funds, you know, uh, I do, I do keep an eye and I, I make sure we balance our flower fund as meticulously as possible.
Well, like, like all, like all matching grants, uh, you know.
That's a good one.
That's a good one, yeah.
And I like the Sullivan matching grant on that one. So that's a, that's a good incentive. So thank you, uh, for bringing that up, and thank you for your generosity. So, um, I would be open to that without objection.
A second?
The councillors, okay?
Do we need a second?
All in, no, all in favor of that?
Aye.
All right. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mike, for the match.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. That was very thoughtful. Speaking with, uh, what money we will then have left over, we're going to have a holiday party coming up on January 14th. So if you have an RSVP'd already, councillors, please make sure you do that when you have an opportunity, uh, to the city clerk. Okay. Um, I had, I'm glad we had an opportunity to take a moment of silence for everyone involved. And I'm certainly, um, certainly our hearts continue to go out to the victims and anything that we can do to help, uh, ease in their burden, uh, in some way. Um, you know, we look forward to doing that. Okay. So that, that, uh, that is the extent of the president's report. I already discussed with the water commissioner thing with you, so, uh, we're pretty much good there. All right. So off to reports of committees. Luckily, I can say to you that, uh, really, the only committee that has anything, uh, to report out is the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee. And that's, brings us to items 14A and 14B.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up as a package?
A second.
A second.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules to take up 14A and 14B as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Let me read these. The Committee on, the, the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee, to whom is referred an order that the school department provide a budget for how much money is being spent annually to pay for school resource officers for the district. Recommend that that has been complied with. 14B reads, the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee, to whom is referred an order that the school department submit a breakdown of all teaching staff in the Hoyok Public School System and where they currently live. Recommend that that order has been complied with, and this is signed off by councillors Roman, Sullivan, and Lebron Martinez. Recognize the chairman, councillor Roman for a motion.
Motion to, uh, receive and, uh, adopt the committee report?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt both committee reports. Under discussion, councillor Roman.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. President. Yes, I tortured my committee. We did meet, uh, right before the holiday break. So thank you, uh, to my colleagues on the city council side and the school committee side. We actually had a really good, healthy discussion, uh, around 14A with regards to the school resource officers. We had the police chief in, it was a very healthy conversation. We are spending $135,000 a year on two school resource officers, one at Dean, one at Hoyok High School. Um, and we had really healthy conversations around, we had just heard from a lot of the Hoyok High School kids that there's, they're looking for money or funding for the Restorative Justice Program. Um, and yet, looking at these programs hand in hand on how we could align these positions in the future. Um, there were other items that tied into this, uh, with regards to looking for an exact job description for the ASROs and how they're chosen. Those are tabled pending school committee action. Uh, but it was a healthy discussion. I thanked the chief for attending. Uh, these two school resource officers are trained by a national school resource officer training program. Um, the officer at Dean Technical High School, um, has been doing this for about several years now. And it's a great program. We're super excited to have this conversation. It was a healthy, uh, conversation. 14B, uh, again, as many of my colleagues know, I've been inquiring around many departments with regards to strengthening our residency requirements. I thank Doctors Reich as well for providing this information. We have 495 teachers in the school district, 157 are Hoyok residents, 338 live with outside of the city of Hoyok. So that's a 32% living within the city. Um, I'm very well and pleased to announce that a lot of the top five cities, uh, surrounding Hoyok are actually where a majority of our teachers live. Springfield, Chicopee, South Hadley, Westfield, and West Springfield. And again, we had an amazing conversation about ways to encourage or entice teachers to move into the city. What can we do? Can we do, instead of a specific, just buy Hoyok Now program, can we have a Teachers Now program where teachers are incentivized to buy mortgages or buy homes in the city of Hoyok? Um, we have 13 teachers who live in the state of Connecticut and two from the state of New York. So it was a really interesting conversation to have. Again, I thank Doctors Reich and my committee members for having these discussions. And I thank them for allowing me to torture them over the holidays. So without further ado, that'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to say that, as you mentioned, um, that actually motto is being actually explored as we speak in order to be considered. And it's, they're trying to, um, you know, motivate that in those individuals to take advantage of some, some programs that are, they're working on with Westfield State and other colleges. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the two committee reports?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Item number 15. Order introduced by councillor Lopez that the DPW superintendent and police chief come to the ordinance committee to discuss the prevention ordinance on panhandling at the following locations by creating or erecting barriers for panhandlers to freely walk along the roadside, soliciting money and interfering with the traffic flow. Hamden in Northampton, Dwight in Northampton, Main and by 391, 391, uh, Main Street exit, 391 and High, Maple and Resnick. High, Maple and Resnick, and Whiting Farms Road and the mall entrance."
Motion to send to the Ordinance Committee?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send the ordinance with a copy to the police chief?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, on this, I'm going to be filing an order for our next city council meeting. It's my understanding that a lot of these people are in bad ways, and it's a form of human trafficking, where I think it's a very organized event going on, and a lot of these people don't have different options, and people are standing there for up to 12 hours a day. And so, I'm going to be filing an order to have the district attorney's office look into this, because I don't think it's right. So, I look forward to discussing this in committee.
We did recently learn that, as it relates to your order, these structures are legal to put at certain intersections.
Didn't we have an order on this issue sometime before? Anybody remember?
We had an order on panhandling generally, so we had the chief come in, and the conversation has been basically between what you can do to regulate the behavior. Now, the question is, what some community is saying, because they can't touch that because of certain First Amendment issues, what he's saying is they're erecting fencing at some of these medians.
Okay.
So that you can't actually stand there and go panhandling and do your business. And so, that is legal. You know, it's more of a safety barriers that are being put up, so that you can't per se regulate the conduct in some instances, they're saying.
I know it's going to be discussed in committee, but this is also, could also restrict, I know that there is a specific, like the fire department, those that fundraiser, fundraising around September, when is it?
Philaboo.
Yeah, Philaboo, whatever it is, and it's in those particular areas, so I just want to just make sure that it's being discussed.
Oh, I thought they did it inside Kmart Plaza.
Yeah, they do it in those intersections, yeah, just so you know. Just so that it doesn't interfere with their fundraising as well.
Well, I'll have to, I hope there's a fence there.
Okay.
I have an idea for that.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm sure we'll hash that all out in committee.
Yeah.
So, a motion on the floor is to send the ordinance with a copy to the police chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item 16, brought to us by Counselor Lopez, "That the city solicitor look into providing training to all commissioners, fire commission, DPW sewer, park and rec, and so on, in order to comply with the open meeting law."
Motion to...
Receive, adopt, Law Department?
Receive, adopt, Law Department, a copy to the Ordinance Committee. I want to see if we can adapt an ordinance to make sure that we do it every year.
Oh, okay, make a regular requirement?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Oh, every two years, I don't know. We will see.
We know we have the ethics one already.
Yes.
That's a law, I believe. Okay, motion on the floor is to send item 16 to the Ordinance Committee with a copy to the Law Department. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 17 is an order introduced by councilors McGee, Leahy, Lopez, and Tallman, ordered that section 2-48 of the travel policy, Part 4A of the Code of Ordinances be amended to add mayor to the list of employees authorized to take their city vehicle home.
Ordinance?
Ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 18. Item number 18 is referred to us by Counselor McGee, "That they're hereby appropriated by transfer in fiscal year 2017, $43,801 from free cash, two longevity, $11,981, clothing allowance, $21,500, holiday differential, $10,320."
Finance?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer this to finance. This is related to a recent MOA between the city and the police officers, Patrolman's Union Local 388.
Mr. President?
And a motion on the floor is to send it to finance. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. On these orders, can we have the department listed, please?
We have previously requested that, so we would kindly refresh people's memory of that. Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's usually related to the transfers, but I know these are put in not by Counselor McGee himself, but...
I know.
Others on his behalf. So, whoever's doing it on your behalf, they would kindly put the department name. Sue Egan was always chasing them to write down the name, so we'll pass that along to the new clerk. All in favor of sending to finance?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Can we get a copy of the MOA, too? Send that along to us. Get a minute. Number 19. Number 19 is introduced by Counselor McGee, and this was a refile from our last meeting. Ordered, "That the sum of $2 million is appropriated to pay for the cost of designing and installing a public safety radio network, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, subsection 1 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to the borrowed to pay such cost in a like amount. Further order, that the treasurer is authorized to file an application to qualify, under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all of the bonds and notes authorized to be issued pursuant to this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as may be required for such purposes." And then I believe, so this is the bonding authorization. Go ahead, Counselor McGee for a motion.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
And prior to discussion, Dave, shouldn't we be adding the language that you didn't want on the bonds to this?
Yes, we're going to want to do that. The Bartley Amendment.
I forgot the way you worded it, so if you want to say it again, so it's on the record, so we can put it in here. Sorry. Just...
In so many words, that was the language that stated, if the funds were not expended, would not be used for any...
We have it here.
Oh, she has it.
So, for the record, any material changed to the description of the project, including the bond, shall be subject to approval by the city council, of the city council.
Okay.
Add that, make an amendment to add that, too.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, so we're through.
Sarah, just make sure you get Brenna that language, please. Okay, thank you.
So, just to remind everyone, we took this up at the last meeting. We approved it, and then there was an item number 28 on the agenda that we said, well, it's already been done, so give it leave to a draw. We were supposed to act on that. Bellamy had added in at the end, so he wanted us to do it on item 28, which we didn't get info until later. So, it's, we've already discussed this, it's now just proper form.
Yep. Procedural. Same, the same $2 million, same radio system. Any thoughts? Counselor McGivern?
Just vote in favor of everything was said at the last meeting and at the Finance Committee Subcommittee. One of the points we talked about was, this type of equipment has a life expectancy of around 10 to 15 years. I don't want to see us bonding for 20 years. It's like, you know, still paying for a car when the car is gone. You know, it should be a bond, and I think the treasurer agreed that that was doable and it makes sense, but it should be within that 10, 15-year period.
That makes sense. Any other discussion? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading? Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to bond for the $2 million. With this language as amended, a no vote is to deny that.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Greeney? Jordane?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas.
By your vote, you've approved the bond request. Done. Item 20. Item 20 is introduced by Counselor McGee, "That there be and hereby appropriated by transfer in fiscal year 2017, $120,000 from free cash to outlay police cars, $120,000."
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt and pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yes, as, last meeting, we took this up as well. When it came out of finance, it was 240 from stabilization, which then were requested, whether it be 240 from free cash and then 120 free cash, 120 stabilization. So, we approved the 120 from free cash and denied both stabilization. The 240 was never offered up to us. The mayor's now coming back saying he'll give us the 120 to give the full 240 to get six cars. So, that's why this is here now.
The power of a no vote.
So, that's...
All comes full circle, doesn't it? Any other thoughts? Counselor McGivern, 13 to 1 tonight, or are we going to go 13?
Oh, I'm the one that led the charge against stabilization for the first time, Mr. President. The power of a no vote would have worked on the Essex House settlement, too.
Mr. President?
All right. All in favor? Counselor Bacon?
How much do we have in free cash now?
Well, at that time, it was roughly 1.3 million. So, if you take out the 120 from last time, there was another one for 40 for the building. Just call it around 1.2. I'll get you a total number tomorrow and email it to you.
Thanks.
Okay, on that happy note, any other thoughts? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Clerk will kindly call the roll.